The first order of business on the work session agenda was an update on the Restore Act Sewer Project Updates. We are not quite ready for that tonight, so we are pulling that from the agenda at the request of Mayor and staff. So we'll move on to item number two, which is a discussion of proposed grant for improvements at the forty acre Colony property. And I don't know what's called the Colony property because it's city property. Yeah, it's Mr. Pat White and Mr. Bob Keizer, but that is City of Fairhope property. If they'll give an explanation to the people as to where that is.
Thank you for granting us the time to speak to you. As you said, the Colony property, or the city's property that we call the Colony property, is a forty acre piece that is a beautiful piece of property that's not really utilized for much of anything at this point in time. We do the best to maintain it, but a lot of the area is low lying so that it stays wet and it's difficult for us to get in there and maintain on a regular basis. But we do maintain the higher portions of it. We do have an established parking area off of Twin Beach and a separate entrance off of thirteen where the Boy Scouts use fire pit and such back there. You'll see on the monitor is basically an overlay of the property. What we're looking to do, we have the possibility for some grant funding, and I've presented to the Recreation Board, Mr. Bob Keizer is here as our President of the Rec Board. As Director of Parks and Recreation, I would like to find ways to create more opportunities for children and families to do outdoor recreation and entertainment within our city. I grew up in this town and we had things like a bowling alley and a skating rink years ago. I just don't feel like there's a whole lot to do here for kids. So I think that this would be a great opportunity to have a nature park, if you will. I'd like to see maybe a four or five acre lake that I believe would help with some of the drainage issues there at the entrance to Cowpen Creek. But it would also be a great amenity for us. We could utilize it as a stocked lake with a fishing pier for kids to fish. And then around the perimeter of the property, we've talked about a disc golf trail, which as you all know, our disc golf at Valanta Park is extremely popular and we have disc golfers there all hours of the day, seven days a week. It's been a very big success and they would like to host more tournaments in our town. So I feel like this would be a good opportunity to have a really nice disc golf trail, which in turn would be walking trails and biking trails if, you know, if that would come to fruition. But, so that's kind of what we're looking at. We think we have a good opportunity for some grant funding to do this. We're basically asking for your blessing on us moving forward with that idea. You have any questions about that? As you see, there's some other pictures. How do we, there we go. This picture is just to illustrate that there is some large trees on the property. We had several disc golfers attend our last Rec Board meeting and some of their concerns were that there's not enough adequate shade like there is at Valanta. But I would say fifty percent of the property is timber and forest, if you will. So, you know, a lot of this wide open area you see at the bottom is where we would like to see the lake.
Counsel? Councilman Martin, comments?
I think it's an excellent idea. I think it's a great opportunity for us to go out and continue to build on our Recreation Department as far as the community is concerned. I agree with you that our kids kind of are at awe of what to do at times. There's nothing better than having a family area to go to and be able to spend time with the whole family, not just the kids. The fishing hole is excellent. We have a couple, but you have to continue to stock it. Questions, would we be the ones stocking it if we built that lake? We would continuously have someone to do that that knows what they're doing?
I haven't dived that much into that into detail. I know that there are companies out there that can do that, that you can contract with. I don't know why we wouldn't be able to.
Alabama's Conservation Department will help.
They would do it for free. Yeah, just thinking that, yeah, okay. So we probably could get somebody that kind of charitably donates those type of situations to us, but I think it's excellent, especially the biking trails. We need more trails.
We do.
You know, we're working on that in other places, but I think the more we can have outdoor in this beautiful city that we have, I think the better we are.
Councilman Robinson?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I mean, exploring it is a great idea. What fruit that brings, we'll have to see. But I think there's, you know, we've got, we've acquired property recently in several different areas and several different things and it's time to try to start putting some of that into use and this is a good start, for sure.
Councilman Boone?
I think the geese would love it. Step on it and have that nine forty five. The geese just can't wait for you, bro.
Well, that would take them away from the pier, right?
Do that very, no, I think it's an excellent idea.
Well, yeah. I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. I don't think that you can add enough parkland to a city and recreational facilities. I think that defines a community and we want to be a healthy community, walkable, whether you're walking or playing disc golf. Would the disc golf replace the disc golf course now or is that, is it diff, so it's going to remain there at Valanta?
I think I would get run out of this town if I tried to remove it from Valanta.
Okay, so it's going to be able to go around the new fields that we're going to build there?
Yes, sir.
Within the next year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll have two maybe disc golf courses here.
That's correct.
Disc golf east and west.
Do we need, would they say we need three to be a certified host of tournament or something like that?
Three different courses?
Three different courses in a certain mileage range, I think.
It was a forty mile.
Something like that, yeah.
Radius. You had to have three courses with a forty mile radius.
Well, we can put one at that new rec facility down there on the thirteen. We get there and that kind of still brings those recreation facilities closer together. Something to think about. That's a big draw. I don't know if there's another one anywhere around, so maybe. I think it's a great idea and I hadn't even thought about the fishing pond, but yeah, it's not very hard at all. It's not even expensive to buy young fish and stock a pond.
Yeah.
But the osprey will love it too. But that's great though. So no, I really like it and I know that you don't have all the details ironed out and locations, but if we could put a biking trail there, biking trail there, that's a hundred dollar fund.
Excuse me?
And that's a hundred dollars going to go to that pond right there. But yeah, so Councilman Conyers, this was just asking if we have interest. So the question is, do we want them to apply for this grant? So absolutely. How much would the grant be? What's the value of the grant?
I'm going to bring someone up who knows.
Yeah.
So this grant opportunity is not available yet. We met with the U.S. Department of, or I'm sorry, Michael Mills, and I pulled it up so I wouldn't mess it up for you. We met with Michael Mills today. He is with the U.S. Economic Development Administration. This is something new for them. They're doing, we expect a notice of funding opportunity to go out pretty quickly, but it is for travel, tourism and outdoor recreation. This is something they don't typically fund. This is kind of a new thing for them. This is what we are kind of hoping that this would fit and that we could make this fit. Obviously, we've got to show an economic development driver for that, whether that is the addition of jobs or retention of jobs or having people in town. You know, the disc golf tournaments, that sounds like something that would pull people. But additionally, having that soccer complex within a walkable space is pretty good for us for that. And then, you know, eventually that recreation property further down on thirteen, to have things so connected could be a really good way for us to sell that to them.
Yeah.
So.
I think so.
Ask them about cost.
I think that's just a cog in that recreation and also that economic opportunity that's going to lie along that corridor right there.
Sure.
I think you can sell that idea because frankly, it's the truth.
And we expect that the match for the city for that will be twenty percent. So, you know, that's kind of typical for what we're seeing, but the match for that grant would expect to, be expected to be twenty percent.
Do we need to allocate some funds to a little bit more mature design? Does that matter? You know, sometimes, you know, when you have a great presentation, it might win the grant as opposed to something that's less mature.
Is it available to do that probably in the new budget year? I mean, I don't think that we'll have to look for that.
I think it might be helpful if there's a way for us to allocate sooner. I do expect, because it is a, I don't know that there is any way for us to do that, but we do expect this to be a pretty quick turnaround process. So it's possible that this application may be due before the end of this budget year. So if we could consider that, I would suggest it. I mean, anything like that is going to make us more attractive.
Do you have some park do-rues around here that can do some pro bono work, draw some some?
That's the way it used to work.
Drawings with some ideas that we can look at?
One question, and I didn't, for, just for, what was, what were those numbers? What did that look like?
So I did, I do have a quote from an engineer service to engineer the entire property. That was under fifty. We talked to a lake contractor, if you will. I was told around a hundred grand to put the lake in.
Better not go.
Disc golf is relatively cheap. You know, to do the baskets and all, you're looking at probably seven or eight thousand dollars. And then if we do the concrete pads or we do gravel pads or what have you, I mean, that's not a major expense.
Yeah, the major money's going to come from the engineer.
Yeah, and then you're going to have to put some restrooms there.
Yeah.
And that property's pretty wet, so I mean, I'm sure there's some wetlands, so we're going to have to get an engineer involved.
Yeah, we're going to have to, yeah, so, yeah, okay.
Very good. All right, sounds good. Jimmy, did you want to comment?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank y'all. All right, next item, discussion of plans for the American Rescue Plan Funds. Ms. Creach and Mr. Langley.
I laid out there a brochure that actually from the U.S. Department of Treasury and then on the third page of that that I gave to you will show you, I highlighted how much what's Fairhope's portion of the funds. One point nine million dollars is what's allocated to the City of Fairhope. Y'all may have seen in the early stages of this grant coming through, there was a number that was much higher. City of Fairhope was originally in the category of towns less than fifty thousand, but because we're part of Eastern Shore MPO, it threw us over into the metropolitan. And so based on that, we, our allocation got a little smaller. So I just want to be able to clear up why our allocation ended up changing. If you heard a beginning, it was, it was closer to four million, so it did get cut.
Counsel, don't make the mistake I made. I started looking down the list of cities and I thought I saw Phoenix City getting three hundred ninety-six million. That's a Phoenix, Arizona.
Yeah. So what you see there, these are the cities that are the metropolitan cities that we were grouped into. And you'll see, because of the MPO, you'll see, you know, Daphne is part of that MPO. I believe right now Foley and Guff Shores is being created into their, another MPO, so they ended up being lumped into the same category as we are.
How did Daphne get double what we're allotted?
I don't know. I mean, I was thinking it was all based on the population, but I'm not sure.
We called, Tim called, he talked to you about the formula, he got the information.
Did it make any sense? Didn't make any sense?
No, Treasury came up with all the calculations. But, so what I want to talk to y'all today is I wanted y'all just to know what this money can be spent on. So what I've been working on is the lost revenue for general fund and what I'm predicting is it's a little under a half a million dollars when we look at all the revenues. We gained some in some areas, but we lost some in areas. Currently, I've asked Chris Williams to look actually at premium pay for essential workers. That is, that is an ability that if we wanted to go back and, not really, you can't go back, but you wanted to choose to pay, like you've seen some other cities are paying a two thousand dollar bonus, whether calling it bonus checks, this is where that's coming from, if y'all hear that in the news. So I've just asked Chris Williamson to look at that to see what kind of employees that would cover. The next big thing that we want to talk about is the water and sewer infrastructure. That's really very clear in this act of how you can spend this money. And so Jason has a couple of projects that meets this qualifications. So for the first year, we're going to get nine hundred seventy thousand and then next July, we should get the rest. So we're not getting this all in one lump sum. What is different on this is we're getting the money in advance, it's not a reimbursement. But October, I have this compliance and reporting guide that's here that I have to do reporting every year. So my first report is due in October. So there's a lot of federal regulations with this. So anything, any project that we do will have to go through federal bid process, which, you know, some of, some of our water and sewer, there's a lot of things we don't have to bid out because it's consumed and used and so, but this, we would have to follow all the federal regs on, on the bid process. So that's, that's a little bit different than if we were just had the money ourselves to go out and do the projects. So do y'all have any questions on, on this act or this grant?
Just waiting to hear what y'all propose.
Okay, so Jason has a couple of projects that he's.
We have two sewer lift station projects. This is shovel ready, they're ready to go out now. So one is Valley, which is an area of Dogwood and Middle Street, and the other's Lakewood, which is on South Scene ninety-eight. Both of those are very much needed yesterday, so they're on the list and we're very much accustomed to dealing, or I am, with the federal grants, so there shouldn't be any trouble.
So I think that answers my question that I had, Jason. I just, my biggest question was, are we going to go out and try to do something new or are we going to take this money and do something that we really, really need to, you know, that is really in dire need and something that we were already planning on doing? I think that the answer I'm hearing is it was something that was in dire need and we were already going to do it. Is that right?
Yes, sir. With my tenure here, you'll never hear me come up here and say something new. I can promise you that.
Yeah, I mean, and in the regs and some of the notes I have on here is upgrading facility, transmission, distribution, storage, including replacement. So what he's.
Now, is that, that one point nine million, and I'm going to probably elaborate on this a little bit. I always cringe when we put a number out there in public. I mean, I know it's supposed to be an open meeting, but as soon as you put one point nine million dollars out there, I can guarantee you both those projects are one point nine four million, amazing. So is that going to use up all the funds? Do we have estimates of what that's going to cost? Because this like sharks, there's blood in the water and they just.
No, sir, we've already got budgetary numbers together. Valley's one seventy-five and I've already put together for, or we have for Lakewood. Lakewood will be the remainder of that, three hundred and I think about three twenty-five and then we'll have to put some money with it for Lakewood.
So that's five hundred K.
And that gives us our first, that gives us our first allotment of money.
Yes, sir.
Well, I still got four hundred and seventy thousand left over based on that.
General, but general fund, that's what I stated. We're just under, under a, under a half a million for general fund losses that we can, we can apply this money to, to replenish general fund.
Okay.
Yeah, that was on your.
That's one of the guidelines?
Yes, if you look here, replenish public sector revenue loss.
That doesn't fall under water and sewer infrastructure?
No, sir. That's just, that is just one of the categories. You can use it to support public health response, replace public sector revenue loss, water and sewer infrastructure, addressing negative economic impacts, premium pay for essential workers and broadband infrastructure. Those are the categories the money can be used for.
Help me out here, is that not water and sewer infrastructure?
But it, no, the projects that Jason talked about are water and sewer infrastructure, but if you did not want to replace the general fund for revenues lost, you could use all of that money for infrastructure.
Oh, so the balance you're saying is going to go back to the general fund?
Correct.
And the first one, okay.
Yes.
I'm with you.
So the first.
So four hundred seventy thousand will go back to the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Will they change?
And that's how y'all choose.
Okay, I thought you were leaving money on the table, but you're not. That's actually, then you can use that for.
I mean, and that's.
Stocking a pond.
And that's y'all's decision. If y'all want to use it a hundred percent that way, or, you know, I was just trying to look at the general fund's loss of revenue, we can replenish that and then the rest you could use for water and sewer.
So you got almost, you got almost a million dollars in year two. So what's the plan for that?
I have a plan for that.
Okay, I mean, we've got, you've got a well, you've got a well that you need. Are generators involved?
The generators are involved, lift stations during rehab. Most of our stations we're doing rehab on. The reason being.
Of the seventy-nine though, we need, let's see, seventy-two of them.
What?
Of the seventy-nine lift stations, we need seventy-two. So that'd be considered a usage.
So we need a new well, right?
Yes, sir.
And that's very costly, right? I mean, I just, I think that what, we have a little time, but I think that we should, all, and Mayor, I guess, probably go through you as the Utilities Director, would be to let us know what our highest priorities are, you know, just what, well, well rehab, new well, transmission line. There's no end for what we need. I mean, we've got four hundred and something K for engineering services for our distribution line, which I believe you told me is going to be about four million dollars.
Right, and again, those are projects that, just like Jason said, he'll probably never talk about a new project in his tenure here because there's so much maintenance to be done. So if you did want to allocate that million towards one of those projects, that certainly the councils, you know, the council can do that.
I think it would just, it's going to, we can easily apply it to any of that or the electrical substations or sewer upgrade. I mean, we're not lacking for need.
I think we have found too with the Restore project, I mean, we thought those were going to be very timely repairs and they're not timely repairs. So the Valley Street Lift Station in particular is one of those ones that we could use the money now to do it. We thought it was going to be done with Restore, so we can go ahead and do that project.
So Mayor, do we need to get that on an agenda really soon? Because I know just getting parts and.
That will be on the next agenda if I'm not mistaken, correct?
So, so Counsel, I guess we need to give a nod of approval so that they can get that on the agenda because as anybody's tried to buy a part, they tried to buy a refrigerator later.
Right now, the chain, yeah, it's hard right now.
So if y'all are agreeable, then that's the direction we'll go with these two sewer upgrades.
As good as any.
And move forward that direction.
I think it's better than any, right? I think it's probably.
Anything with our infrastructure.
Counsel, Kevin, absolute? Okay.
Any questions?
That's easy enough.
Try to get Jason to hold down that excitement, would you?
He said, hold down.
I said, try to get Jason to hold down that excitement.
He's excited.
We got it, yeah.
Don't say this to the guy who can't hear you.
You would know.
You got that right. Speak up.
What has Kevin gotten into today?
Ease himself.
I'll tell you. Okay, item four, discussion of interlocal agreement between Emerald Coast Utilities Authority and the City of Fairhope. Mr. Dale Lender and Mr. Richard Johnson. I think this one will be a pretty easy one.
Yes, sir. And I'll, Dale lives this every day, but as you know, our recycle problem, our recycle program is quite popular. I know during our recycle shutdown during the response to Hurricane Sally, for every one call we had about debris, we had at least three calls about when you're going to start picking up a recycle again. So we know it's important. As you know, about three years ago, we went through this exercise and kind of had to accept a sliding scale with ECUA, which was based upon the commodity price, a current commodity price per ton of mixed recycles. And depending what that price was, we may had to pay for them to take a recycling up to they could pay us. And kind of the short of the long story of it is the worst it got for us, at one point in time, we were paying forty-five dollars a ton to process recyclers. Come January of this year, we got to zero, meaning that we didn't pay them and they didn't pay us. Then shortly after that, we got to two dollars in our favor and right now it's five dollars in our favor. And we started feeling better. That's a fifty dollar swing from one direction to the other. And ECUA has approached us and says we need to, it's time to renew the contract. And what they are asking for very simply is to go to a fixed rate of us paying fifteen dollars per ton to take it. And that's, that's kind of a punch in the gut. We've weathered the storm thinking we're getting back to where we need to be and now it seems to be a backtracking. Here's the challenge. Right now, we really only have one sole source for a buyer of mixed recyclers and that is ECUA. There's no doubt that they, they have invested a lot into their operation. They, they had to shut down following Sally and Zeta, but they quickly got it back up and running. I think we were only out for what, two weeks, three weeks? And they are making a commitment to invest about another two million dollars into their operation there to make it more efficient and things of that nature. The good news is, is Baldwin County Solid Waste is working very hard to establish a county-based MRF that we think we will become a member of. If you remember before Hurricane Sally, we, you participated in a resolution of support pursuing that so that we kind of have local control of our recyclers. Unfortunately, Sally and the hurricanes kind of set that back and we don't know when that's going to come to fruition. But the challenge is, is that they, they want to renew, our current contract ends at the last day of September. We have to get it before you, then it has to go before the ECUA Board to get ratified. So we just wanted to kind of give you a heads up that this was coming. Probably will, you will probably see it either the first or the second meeting in July. But at this point in time, if we had a good plan B to offer you, we would, we would offer it, but this is really the only buyer that we have a relationship with that will buy our mixed recyclers.
But they're wanting us to pay them. They're not going to buy it. They're paying us five dollars a ton now and they want to switch to us pay them fifteen dollars a ton.
That is correct.
That's not a very good deal.
I agree.
It's more difficult. I take back what I said. I thought this was the, the agreement between us and Escambia for shared services in a storm. So, I mean, there can be a middle ground as well. It could be, you know, I mean, because if you dollar average what we've been paying and what we've been receiving, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's a good deal. I don't know that I'd agree to that contract.
And we're liable for processing fees here as well. So we, I'm reading this and I was reading it today and I really, from what I knew and now what I'm reading is, I mean, this is all one-sided. This particular, I mean, I, I'm just speaking aloud publicly because it has changed tremendously and we have to take it to them.
That is correct.
So you add all those pieces and that's not a good deal at all. I mean, are we that desperate is what I'm asking.
What other options do we have?
Well, the only, you know, and Dale and I talked about this morning, really, the only other buyers that we have is for metals, specifically more aluminum, and cardboard still has a market locally. I mean, so, so, but the problem is, is that our stream is probably only twenty percent cardboard and aluminum. So eighty percent of recyclables, then we don't, we don't have a place to take. So that, that's the challenge. I mean, we're already pretty, pretty aggressive in our mixed metals. We deal with, what is the company that's banner?
Well, it's Weiss Recycles and EC.
Yeah, and so we're, we're seeing income from that with scrap metal and things of that nature, white goods that we pick up and things of that nature. But the typical residential household recycling, it's going to have your milk jugs and your water drinking bottles and your glass, your tin cans, your newspaper, mixed paper, we don't have a market for it. And again, the, the current market says that it, it costs you ninety-five dollars to process and sell a mixed recycle. So again, that was where the pass agreement says when the commodity price was below the handling cost, then we paid. When it was above the handling cost, we received payment. And right now, that, the, the market says it's worth about a hundred dollars on the open market, so they're paying us the five dollars to the good on a ton of it. You know, again, it's not a good deal. You know, I would like to keep the deal we have and hopefully continue to see the market improve and, and we may move up on the other side of that chart where we get up to twenty-five or thirty dollars a ton coming back to us, but that's the deal they put before us.
But you got to put it back on them. They're, they're making money, so.
Yeah, and they're making eighteen thousand dollars at least.
They have risk involved too. We don't agree to this agreement.
Right.
Then they're losing money because they're not selling it for a hundred dollars a ton. And I mean, that's not going to be all profit for them, but they are in the business to sell it. They wouldn't be paying us five dollars a ton if they weren't making money. So they are going to be on the losing end and it's a matter of how much pain can they withstand if we don't agree to this as well. So they are going to be on the losing end, and it's a matter of how much pain can they withstand if we don't agree to this as well?
Yeah, I agree, I mean-
It's, but I think that maybe we can negotiate with them and try to find middle ground and say, well, you know, we either stick with the current arrangement, or, you know, or be net neutral, zero cost, but going from getting paid $5 to paying 15, just like that? That doesn't make good business sense to me.
No particular reason for it.
And it's not. I mean, everything falls on us while they're making a profit. I'm trying to figure out why all of a sudden we couldn't, we were right there. Why couldn't we just renegotiate the same deal we had? That's the, that's, that's, because this totally does not make sense.
You know, I, I think that whether it's devious on their part, or, or whatever, they are kind of in the driver's seat. Meaning they know that they have no competition in this region, meaning that-
They don't have to sell it to them, though. We just tell them we'll stockpile it.
Well, that's, we have a limited capacity for that, too.
Well, I wouldn't advertise that, but I'd, I'd stockpile it.
Well, I, I will tell you, we will-
The stance I was looking for, I mean, I, I just, because I can't-
That's what they're banking on, and, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't cave to them.
I would think that the recycled goods prices kind of somewhat inverse to the economy. And if the economy is really, really strong, then the, the value of those is probably down a little bit. So, I mean, I understand the fluctuation. I mean, I agree, I don't, I don't like the deal. And I'm not suggesting we take it. I think we definitely go back to them, but some of them, but, but that does ebb and flow, the valuation of what-
Well, absolutely, and just, just so you know, fuel prices is-
The agreement was based on the commodity price, and it was fair. I mean, because we were paying them at one time, but this is just adding $15 on to their profit.
And processing fees.
And, and just so you know, usually when fuel prices go up, recycled commodity values go up. That is the relationship. Apparently, there's some sweet spot where when fuel gets a certain, or petroleum products get a certain expense, it is more expensive to make virgin plastics than it is to recycle. So all of a sudden, the market comes back to you when fuel prices go up, so.
And, and look, and oil's been up, and it's going to go up a little more. I don't know how long it's going to stay up, but it's going, I mean, it's not going to, it's not going to do an about-face, you know, subject to a natural disaster or a pandemic, but I don't think it's reasonable to expect petroleum prices to go down suddenly.
Okay, well, we'll keep you abreast, and, and, you know, Mr. Rudd has been always willing to meet with us, and, you know, again, he, he tends to, his response is, it's, it's not me, it's my board, and, and, you know, they're-
And you said you come in near board, too, right?
Yes, sir.
Kevin, Jay, what do y'all think? I mean, I want to send a clear message out.
No, I think it's worth negotiating, I mean, but the question is, what do we do if they refuse? I mean, kind of sounds-
You go with the deal.
That's what they're expecting you to say.
What do you pay if you have to dump it?
Well, I mean, just so you know, Daphne's been taking their recycles to the, to the landfill at $30 a ton for the last, you know, and it's several factors that made that decision for them. They lost their recycle center to a fire, but still, they're still dumping their recycles.
There's ways to negotiate that, whether we stick to the current price and say, we'll agree to a $5 increase per year, which would take us to zero, and then plus five and plus 10 over, you know, per year for three years or something.
Have we always carried the recycles to them?
No.
So, now, I was reading this contract. It clearly states that not only will we have to pay them, but we have to bring it to them.
That is correct.
I mean, that's money.
Absolutely, there's, the, the, the cost recycle is, is, is high. There's no, there's no, no offense, but about that.
I understand, I'm just saying they hit us in all different directions, is all I'm saying.
For years, we had the benefit of a private buyer that was very favorable to us, but he eventually went bankrupt, and, and we got to scrambling, and ECUA, which is a Florida-based-
Emerald Coast.
Authority. Were able to do some kind of interstate activity to allow recycles to come from Alabama, because that's apparently is quite problematic. So, you know, they, they kind of, they kind of treat us like they're doing us a favor, Dale. Would that be a-
The thing you got to realize is that they operate basically with Pensacola, Escambia County, Santa Rosa County. That's their main business. We're just a small part, and as we contribute our tonnage to their processing, it doesn't have a big impact on their profitability. So they're basically allowing us to use their facility. Baldwin County used to have four recycle vendors. They all went out of business in the last eight to 10 years. The last one left was ECUA, or we self-process. And if we self-process, that means we'll probably have to bring in additional labor, and that's where that $95 per ton cost comes in. Our biggest profit generator for the last 10 years was always mixed paper. We always could bet on $60 a ton. It never went down for the last, since 2010, when I first started. Now, mixed paper is, but it went to negative $5 a ton. We had to pay to get rid of it. Cardboard went from $145 a ton down to approximately $20 a ton. So the, the whole market crashed. Now it's coming back a little bit with the oil price, but that's mostly plastics, which we don't deal with that too much. Water bottles and milk jugs is what we want to collect. If we, if we don't go with ECUA, we could self-process again, but the cost will be high, and the profitability will be, still be low, because those processes for cardboard, aluminum cans, and mixed paper, we can do here pretty easily. Plastics, separation, it's not so easy. Takes a lot more labor, and the profitability return is pretty low on that. So we, we would still not make that same $15 a ton back. So it's just a question of, do we wait for Baldwin County to start their MRF and get going with that, which is what we're betting on, and then just carry through with ECUA in the interim, and go ahead and agree with that with $15 a ton? Or even if we dumped it in the landfill, it'll be $30.
No, you're making their case for them, Dale, I'm sorry. You know, you're making their case for them. That's what they're counting on you doing, and you just don't negotiate that way, I'm sorry.
Sure, all right.
Is this a year-to-year contract, or?
That's a three-year, three-year contract.
It's basically year-to-year, we have the right to drop out at the top.
I read three-year contract.
They, they ask for a two-to-three-year agreement, but we have the right to cancel it, so. So it's, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, it's right to counsel with notice, and they can counsel with us with notice, too, so.
We have some options.
Yeah.
We, we have options, and we're going to have some options in, in, in three years, too. And, you know, the trend right now is that it's going to, it's more profitable. Their board wants profits, it's going more profitable, not less profitable. Now's not the time to cave into that request and pay them.
Sure.
It's just not the time. If it was going the other way, I'd say absolutely. If we were going from making 15 to paying five, and we saw that trend, I'd say we better jump on it while we can, but.
Yeah, I would like this offer about four years ago. They didn't make it then, so.
Right, exactly. We would have liked it then.
Yeah, and, and we'll, we'll sit down and talk with them, and, you know, the, I would, I would be okay if they would give us a year extension on the current agreement we have, and let's see if we can weather the year. And even if they want to put a, a cap on the maximum payment, you know, but just stay out of the negatives.
That's a good idea.
That's a great idea, I mean, that's a great alternative.
I think there's room to negotiate.
Okay, we'll work on that, and we'll bring it back.
You know, they may think that if they freeze it, paying us $5 a ton for three years, because they may, I guarantee you, they know the forecast, and it may be going to 15 or 20.
I don't think they'd be investing in their, their facility if they didn't think it was going in the right direction, so, I agree.
That's the advantage we have, is we know they're seeing something.
Well, thank y'all very much.
All right, thank you. All right, committee updates. Councilman Martin?
Committee updates, I think we've heard a little bit from Pat White and Mr. Keizer as far as the area that we call the Colony Property, and what the Red Board is looking forward to do with that. The baseball fields are coming along, that's, and the ADA parking is coming along. So those are the two most important things as far as the city on recreation. The Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board has been working diligently on helping the city with our wording and, and representation on the Triangle Property, and that, that should be moving forward shortly here. So we're excited about that. That's all I have.
Very good. Councilman Conyers?
I've got no comments at this time, sir.
All right, Councilman Robinson?
No comment.
Councilman Boone?
No comment.
All right, I, I have a little bit of sad news to share on, on one of the committees, is the Fairhope Airport Authority. We had a most capable Mr. Lee Shelton that we appointed, and he began in April, and many of you may not know this, but about, maybe within two weeks, he put in his resignation, and we knew something was, was not right. Well, he had been diagnosed with a terrible disease suddenly, and he passed away Friday morning. So thoughts and family, our thoughts are out to Lee Shelton's family, and our sympathies are with them. But a very sad story. He, he had just a stellar resume, and we were looking forward to working with him. So anyway, I believe we have an appointment tonight for the Airport Authority. But I just wanted to keep Mr. Shelton's family in our thoughts and prayers. Department heads. Kim, you're the closest. And I'll tell you what, as we're doing this, if we can do these pretty hurriedly, and if you have something on tonight's agenda, if you can cover that while you're up here. I know I always do it the opposite way, Kim. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna whip through that agenda tonight, I can promise you.
I just have, I just have a couple of things. We received our payment from the state on the Flat Creek tree removal. That came in on Friday, so I just want to give you all update on that. The sewer project Restore, we have received our first payment on the sewer Phase 1. Took three months to process that. And then we're still doing good on our IRS full-fuel audit. As of right now, she has everything, and told me she will not get back to me until July 8th, so I think everything's good. What we have on the agenda with Jason up here is, you have a brochure up there, it's on Invoice Cloud. And Invoice Cloud is a customer web, it's a customer portal. It will be a web-based portal. Currently, our Munis system has the capabilities of taking payments, and we do. We take a lot of payments on there. But it's, it's very cumbersome for your customers.
Very cumbersome.
Jason can probably elaborate a little bit on there.
And this is what you had brought to us in the last meeting?
I had spoke to you individually, showing you these things.
It's, it's just, we've had nothing but really a lot of complaints as far as Munis goes, people getting registered. We made it a little easier where they could go on and just put account numbers on, go straight to paying their bill. It doesn't seem like it's helped too much. I think what they offer us is a lot easier for the customer to deal with. It will draw a lot more customers in, and at the same time, they'll actually reach out to customers. You know, we're, what we're really aiming for is to get more customers to sign up for the e-bill. And with this happening, it will save us money that way. But it's just as far as providing a, a better customer experience. It, it provides a lot more than what we can do with Munis.
What does this biller agreement look like that we're asked to authorize the mayor to engage in tonight?
So what I want, what I want to go over is on cost, what their incentive is, and that's what's in that billing agreement. Their, this company's incentive, they're getting paid for every e-bill that they get turned over, they get 20 cents. That's what they're going to, they're going to charge us, 20 cents. It currently costs us 55 cents. So, so every customer that they're going to reach out to, to get them to turn into an e-bill, we don't, we're not printing, we're not mailing. So that's a 35 cent, you know, savings that we're going to have. So that's, that's the main cost that you're going to see in there. Currently, we are paying in credit card processing fees around $182,000 a year. That will still stay the same. That number may go up, because more customers, it's going to be processed with a credit card, but they're matching what we're currently paying now. So they will be the merchant, they will be the one that's, that has all the merchant responsibilities. They will be paying all the fees, they're just going to pass that through to us, but the charge would be at 1.7%, and that's currently at what we're paying now. Everything else, I mean, is, is same cost as what we are. I just think we'll have a savings with them converting to e-bill and the reminders they'll send us. What we're trying to do is for, like, the write-offs that y'all did, we did at the last meeting, this is what we're trying to prevent. They're going to be sending out reminders, email reminders, text message. In the text messages, it's the incentive, we'll have a link to pay your bill. It's going to have some other payment options that we don't have, the Munis, where there's the, I want to say it's the Venmo, it's, it's these other, these other-
Apple Pay.
Apple Pay.
And anything new that comes along.
They're just on the, the cutting edge versus what is Munis. And I'm just trying to look at, if there's ways that these reminders can go out to get these customers to pay on time, then that's, that's going to cut down delinquency, it's going to cut down on sending out, you know, meter guys to turn the service off. We have the capability through this service of when Jason has a list of cutoffs, phone calls can go out through this service. To be able to let these people know, we're sending somebody out to cut your service off.
So they're going to solicit our customers to sign up for this? So we're going to have to share all of our customer information with them?
We, we will be sending them what's in our Munis billing. Our billing data will be converted over to them, so they'll have that billing data. So when that customer goes online to pay their bill, they can see what, they can see their bill.
So when, but if they haven't signed up for this service, are they going to just continue to hound them for, to sign up? Look, I get, there's a certain pest control company that sends me an email about every day, and it just makes me so mad. I'm not going to do business with them, because I'm getting, I'm just sick of getting emails from them every day.
And, and I don't think it's, I don't think it works really that way as much as it is that you're, you want to draw people into the website, but when you draw them in, to have those options available in front of you. So with Munis, it's not necessarily like that. But if you're a customer that's gone on to the Munis site before, then you would go on to this site, except this site would have more options when you're going through the payment. And that's, I think, where they do most of the sign-ups, is like that. Not necessarily hounding customers, but making it available and easier for when they do go to pay the bill, that these options are available. With Munis, it's not like that. It's not when you go on, hey, do you want to sign up for e-bill? Do you want to do this? No, it's, it's, it's just a very cumbersome process.
So they're charging, I'm going back to the, thank you for that. So they're going to charge for credit or debit cards 1.7% per transaction. They're actually even charging for a debit card. So 1.7%, we're not sharing in any of those profits they're keeping. I know that's not off, they have to pay the credit card merchant a fee, but they're keep, they're making something off that 1.7%.
That's the same as what we currently pay now.
We couldn't negotiate, make a little bit off of that, too? Yeah, point one, point two?
Well, I did negotiate down, they wanted higher than this. They wanted the 210.
Okay, okay, good.
So from, we got down to 210 for them to match what we are currently making now, or we paying now.
Oh, that we're paying.
Yes, so I felt like I did negotiate down.
So we're paying that, then? They're not tacking that on to the customer's bill?
No, we currently pay that. The only, the only fee that's on here that we're, that will pass through to a customer is if a customer calls and does not want to go to the website, and they want to pay over the phone with a credit card, there is a 95 cent fee, and, and they're going to collect that. We won't see that fee. And we have customers that call probably on a day that their, their service being turned off, a due date, and they're calling on the phone and they want their-
And they call, you know, regardless, yeah.
And somebody pays with an e-check, that's 65 cents. Is that charged to us or the customer?
It's charged to us.
That's more than a stamp?
We, but we, but we still, we still have that charge running through our bank.
Oh, we had it running through the bank? We had that charge anyway?
Yeah, banks are going, yeah. So our, our BBNT who processes-
Jimmy's saying, I wish I wasn't on the council, right? You know, I see a business opportunity.
He can give us some good advice.
That's right.
That's right.
Sure you can negotiate that.
Any advice on that, Jimmy?
Got to negotiate it.
You can negotiate, all these, all these numbers are negotiable, aren't they? They want us to sign up for the service, to give us 1.7, and charge us 55 cents for e-checks.
And, and if that's what you want me to recommend, we can go back and, and propose that.
I think it's worth a chance.
Okay.
I think it's worth a chance. I don't know, council, what about y'all? I, I just think these things are negotiable, and if they want our business, you know, paying what we're already paying, it, yeah, it's convenient, but- you know, paying what we're already paying, it, yeah, it's convenient, but save us some money while you're at it.
I will speak for Kim, because she's not speaking up for herself. But she has really worked hard on this contract, and she has beat them down. She has been on the phone with them, she, especially for that 1.7 fee. I mean, she was-
Oh, it sounds like she's worked hard.
She has, she's been working really hard on it.
She can blame it all on us.
So I'm not sure they're gonna agree, because she, they're probably tired of hearing from her. But she has, she's been working really hard.
My council didn't, they balked at the numbers.
No, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted you to see, what it does cost us is send out to print, mail. Our delinquents is 77 cents per, so if we can get our delinquents, you know, down and be able to send notices by an email, a text message, I think that's gonna reduce some of those costs.
Kim, do you have that cost there on mailing the delinquent postcards? How many we mail and what those cost us?
Well, it's 77 cents. I have a total, what we spent last year, $150,000 on printing and mailing, utility statements. So, you know, that's where I'm trying to look at, is there a way that we can, we can cut that cost in half? That's the goal. And the goal is trying to get our customers engaged when they're due, here's payment options. That's the big thing, because, you know, from a year from now, those customers that we lost through their, their bills got so high, you know, and then we're writing them off.
If anybody's interested, this is for a three-year term, and it automatically renews for an additional three-year, successive three-year terms unless terminated. Pretty standard, I'm sure, but if you, if you adopt it like it is, we're locked in for three years. It's not bad. I really think you did a great job negotiating it, but sometimes when you can just blame it on somebody else.
I don't, I do not have a problem if y'all want to table it and-
And it may not be worth, you know, fighting over another 10 cents for every, I mean, you know what I'm saying? It may, may only save 20 bucks, I don't know. Maybe we should just adopt it.
And I've sent it to Marcus.
Move on.
Yeah.
Kim, what do you think? Move on? We'll make the final, but what's your opinion? I would like to hear.
I don't think it's a lot. I don't think it's gonna be big savings if we're talking 10 cents, but I mean, it's y'all's direction.
No doubt.
Y'all approve the contract.
The biggest savings would be if you could negotiate that debit card fee to be lower, but that's probably gonna be very hard to do if they started at 2.1 and we got them to 1.7. We're paying that. I was actually worried about the customer, what they were having to pay. Yeah, I would fight more for the customer than for the city here.
I'm okay with it.
The only fee that we have on there for the customers, if they want to talk to somebody on the phone to do their credit card payment, when they have free options on the website.
Right.
And that's actually, it would be an automated system that if they won't, if they have to pay their bill over the phone, then they'd have to pay for it.
Gotcha.
And we just don't have the staff to take credit card payments on the phone. I mean, that's, we're trying to improve customer service, and if you had, you know, somebody dedicated to do that all day long, that takes away some other customer service items that can be done.
How do you handle the customer that has the bill that's greater than $1,000? We do not allow them to be paid by credit cards. We do not, because we don't want to pay that fee. We adopted that ordinance probably seven or eight years ago. How's that gonna be handled with this company when they go sign up for that?
In their contract, in their contract, they're saying no payment greater than $1,000 in this contract.
Okay. So they can't pay electronically then if it's over $1,000?
Through the system.
Through the system.
Snail mail.
We have a lot of people come to City Hall.
Well, that was in relation to Board of Education having tens of thousands of dollars of bills, and we were, that's a mighty hefty fee, and we just basically forced them to cut us a check.
Right.
Which they can easily do.
Right.
And they didn't have a problem with it. That was the history on that.
Hmm.
Okay, very good.
Anything else?
All right. No, I think we're good. Thank you. All right. Paige?
All right. Good evening, y'all. Just want to remind everybody up 4th of July, Sunday, at the Fairhope Pier. We do have our display company that's coming in to do the fireworks this year, so it is gonna be a little bit different down at the pier. At about 8:00 or 9:00 AM on Saturday, July the 3rd, we are gonna have to close down the pier for them to be able to load in and move racks, move those fireworks in. As soon as they are completed, though, we'll be able to access the pier up into the marina. So Sunday, that should be open all the way up to the marina, and then probably closer to 7:00 PM that night, we're gonna close the whole pier down. Fireworks are gonna be at 9:00 PM, and the Baldwin Pops will play at 7:30. So y'all come out and see us. I haven't looked at the weather yet, so hopefully everything is looking A-OK for Sunday. And then we have the Glow in the Park next Thursday night on July 8th at the Fairhope Burst Community Park. Of course, that's a great event put on by the Downtown Fairup Business Association and the city. So I think they're playing Toy Story 4 at 8:00 PM, so we also have that going on. And then I do have one thing on the agenda tonight on, I think it's 19, we are gonna be purchasing the lights for the lighting of the trees. We actually inventoried about three times to make sure, but we do have a good bit of back stock from last year. So that cost is a lot lower than it normally is, just due to the fact that we do have some trees, or some lights left over from last year. So, not trees. Well, let's not talk about the trees. No. No, some lights, some LED lights. So we're only purchasing 5,000 LED lights. And Jeremy's here to answer any questions, if you have questions about the tree lighting. His crews are gonna be leading that up this year, so we're excited.
Jeremy, your crew will be installing them? So the, you know, back five years ago, or a little more than four years ago, when that changed, you know, the council had heard that, that the staff didn't want to do that. We'd hear mixed results, and some people wanted to do it, and some people didn't. We heard department heads didn't want to do it because they were out there. But I mean, I feel like if you're out there, anybody that's out there working should be paid for their time. So I would-
I don't understand why.
I've always said, I think if we just pay them for their time, they want to make that overtime.
It's the perfect time of year for it.
And I think it's gonna be a combination. I mean, I think y'all's guys will probably be leaving it, but I think it'll also be a combination with public works still, too.
Sure. And I thought that worked out well. I mean, am I okay to assume that if you're getting paid to do that, whether it be straight time because you flexed, or whether it be overtime, your employees are happy? We want, we want your employees to be happy, and we want you to be happy.
I would like to be getting overtime myself.
We're gonna give Jeremy comp time, so he can go hunting or something to football game. But no, I do think the employees enjoy doing it because they get paid overtime. Plus, they also will get some comp time. A lot of them like to use that during the holidays or during hunting season. But it will be a mix of electric and public works employees. Jamie Rollins, I think, headed the public works department last year in overseeing that project and did a great job, and I still think that they want to be involved. So we'll, you know, Jeremy and Jamie can work together to make sure that we have a good crew doing that.
I think that's excellent.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Pat?
As Mr. Martin mentioned, the ADA ramping is coming along. They started block work today, and they were still there this evening when I left, so that's going well. Our summer camps have gone really well. This summer, we've had basketball, track. Last week was archery. This week is soccer. So those have gone really well. I've witnessed the kids having a good time with that. So I'm appreciative of the coaches that are putting in the time for that. I have a few things on the agenda tonight. One is the engineering of the ball fields and the parking. That's pretty self-explanatory. Resurfacing of the hard courts at the center-
You got that item number real quick.
I'm sorry. That's 16.
Okay, I'm just yotting your name down by, Pat.
Okay. And then 18 is resurfacing of the hard courts at the Center Center. That's something that's been put off past couple of years. Last year, we got ready to do it and chose not to spend that expense due to COVID. So we really need to get that done. The courts are starting to get into pretty bad shape, so we need to bring those up to speed. And then item number 20 is the playground for the Rotary Youth Club and Community Park. And that is part of the overall budget that we had to do improvements to that park.
Jimmy, when we get to those items, you just quickly let me know whether they're all budgeted. All right, because you know we're gonna ask it. Okay, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
All right. Jessica?
All right.
Mr. Hall? All right. Chief Ellis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jeremy?
I believe you got at least one item on there.
14, I believe, I'm sure.
That's it?
Yeah. So, no, we've got a lot of big projects coming up, and this is, I talked with the mayor, you know, I think it's a good idea to go ahead and put some more. I'm not sure the price of how much it's gonna be, but like the reserve at Valanta and Greeno, those things are, it's gonna take some engineering to just make sure we get it right, make sure they have things, they're ducks in a row. So I don't think it's gonna be a huge expense. Shouldn't take them too long to figure out, you know, what needs to go where. So that is just why that's in there.
Do you think that big project going on at Valanta and Greeno Road is gonna impact the substation upgrades? Is that something they have to look at?
No.
The substation at Valanta, that is.
So you guys have approved the passer study. We got the substation up where it needs to be. It's being built now. We hope, and just giving you an update on that to energize that mid-January, hopefully, I mean, mid-July, hopefully a couple more weeks. But the system studies you guys approved, that's gonna impact that with the load and everything. So the wire conductor sizes and all that, we're looking at, you know, stressing the system that way. But I don't think it's gonna be, my engineer, just talking with him, didn't seem, think it was gonna be too big a deal. I think we got enough for it, but I mean, we're putting that strip mall right down there also. We've got a lot of projects going on. We've got a subdivision going in, Dire Road there, so there's a lot of things happening. So, yep. But anyways, I think that's all I got on there. I know you guys probably want to update on the substation outage. Tomorrow, I'll be here, employed with the city 23 years, so I think last week was the most stressful week I've had since I've been here, for sure. But electricity doesn't ask you any questions, don't care who you are, doesn't matter. It doesn't care. And I'm not exactly sure why. The substation insulators exploded, but that's what happened in Fairup Avenue. I know we had a lot of lightning Tuesday night. I got some primary wire at the HEPA apartments. And all I can think is that it got on that substation, weakened some insulators, and when it went kaboom, it caused a lot of damage. So unfortunately, we got Valanta out of service, so I wasn't able to shift any load anywhere because we just don't have, didn't have anywhere to put it. And so it just had to be out until we got it fixed. Give kudos to our guys, they worked hard, and they did a great job, got that back up and going. So I think we were out for two hours and got it back on. So I know there was a lot of upset people. So nothing to do about it. That's what it was. So I was just happy that it wasn't anything more major like the transformer, else we would have been really up a creek. So, that's it. Unless you guys got anything else for me?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, man.
Jason, you got anything more to add? Water? I know you got some items.
Connection on 33.
Number 12. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the engineering for the treatment plant 3 and the new well, which was the proposing crib, as the engineer had recorded. This will be the well design and getting it out for bid, and also the upgrade to plant 3, which would be a totally a new building, will have to be built with a new clear well. And that's, we're in the negotiation stage. If you all are okay with the engineer?
So that, that amount budgeted, that's just for the professional engineering services? I'm looking at the first paragraph of the letter. It says, "Professional engineering and design services for treatment plant number 3, well 3-11 for the water department is budgeted for $1 million in 2021 and $1.5 million for 2022."
Yes.
Is that, is that just for the professional engineering services that is budgeted? That's for the-
No.
That's for the work as well. And I was gonna say, that's not-
As soon as we-
$20 million worth of work.
No. No, if we can get this out on the street, we're gonna get the well immediately, as soon as we get y'all's okay. And then the plant.
And when you say the well 3-11, is that, that's actually where they're going into the ground, tapping into the water table again, or the aquifer, and producing new water?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Not a rehab, in other words?
No, sir. It's a total new well.
Okay. Okay. Questions? What else? You also have, I'm trying to look down the list real quick.
I got the next one, too, 13.
13, yeah, okay.
That's just on call, engineering service, Pressey Silver. It's budgeted, we've got 30,000 remaining, but that's just from now to the new budget year. Let's try to get some of these projects moving.
When you say get these projects moving, though, I mean, don't we have engineering companies that are, you know, designing what needs to be done to our water system? If we trust what they're doing, why are we hiring another engineering firm to-
We haven't hired any engineering firm to do what he'll be doing. That's the stuff that we're having to look at now to keep up, is what this engineer is for now. Like Valley, the initial engineering on Valley, the force main on Fairhope Avenue.
Okay, so he's filling a void. He's not filling a job that somebody else is doing.
That's correct.
He's not just overseeing what they're doing.
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
He's not acting like basically an agent for the city overseeing the improvements that are going on?
No, sir.
Yeah, the Valley Street projects, a good example of that.
And so is Fairhope Avenue, the force main from Bishop Intermediate School all the way out to 181.
Yeah, that makes sense now. That's new task. If we got new tasks that need to be engineered, he's doing that work.
We're just behind the eight ball so far. We gotta have somebody in place now to help with this.
I got you. And that's a better option than doing it piecemeal and having-
Yes, sir.
-come to the council with another engineer for every single task that we have to have done.
And they're not large engineering fees either. They're the smaller engineering fees, obviously, based on the not to exceed. So it helps us keep those projects moving.
And has he been doing this, I, you know, I love Larry. I mean, he does a lot of work, but I always picture him as doing, you know, he comes in here with a lot of developers, subdivisions, drainage plans, improvement plans. I don't guess I've seen the water, sewer aspect of what he does. And I know he's not one person, he has people that work-
I'm not trying to dumb it, or dumb it down, but it's mighty simple. We're telling him what size pipe. He's doing the engineering as survey, to survey which side of the road and get all the elevation shots and all that to get it ready in a bid format. I mean, not being mean, but just any engineer can do that.
Right.
We just, Larry's local.
He does do other projects. He's doing a project right now, working on Testament Water and Sewer that he did on Silver Hill.
You just excluded yourself. You can't vote now, you just excluded.
Well, and the other thing, the other thing for Jason is that Larry's been very timely. You know, it's hard to find an engineer right now who's timely and turning these projects over and as quickly as we're moving and want to get things on the street. Larry's been really helpful in doing that.
I mean, I didn't know that he didn't do that. I just haven't been involved with him in that, in those kind of projects, Kevin. I didn't know he did water sewer. Pretty simple stuff, Richard? Be careful how you answer that.
Red mudwork right there.
Okay. Right. I know you don't have time to do it. It gets you to look at it.
I'm part of the not-timed class right now.
You're right. All right. And then Jason, what else? You also had-
15.
15.
Which is sizable. And that is, been carried over, I know before I came, a couple, three years ago, was first introduced with a 16-inch main from treatment plant 3 back to town. That, that treatment plant 3, as we call the two wells that's there now, can actually produce 2 and 1/2 million gallons a day, which is lower than 1,700 gallons a minute. The problem is, the pipes- The problem is the pipe size from that back to town's only eight. So, and today, if you're only looking at today and not tomorrow, then the original 16 that was said early on would handle the issue, would handle the water. So, you would reduce to around a $3 million project, which you've hired me for my opinion. So, my opinion is that's not where we need to be. Where we need to be is where that, what that plant can actually do down the road, which I think it's a diamond in the rough. It's five or six acres the city owns, and there's already been proven there's two water aquifers there. So, we're tapping into the same aquifer that the two wells are there now with this new well 311, which would also produce, they're estimating around 1,000 gallons a minute. So, we're increasing the capacity by just adding one well to 4 million gallon a day, which is, as you well know, 2,800 gallons a minute. The 16 can't carry that with the velocity, so we upsize to a 24, which also prepares the city down the road for the next well that can go there, which would be an estimated another 1,000 gallons a minute, which would put us between 5 and 6 million gallons a day out of that plant. The 24 would be 2.6 miles on this project from the plant back to Fairhope Avenue and tie onto the existing line on Fairhope Avenue, which is a 12 and an eight. And the 12 steps up to a 14 when it gets treatment plant two, before you get to Walmart, coming from the east to the west. So, that's the reason for the 24 in this project.
I mean, that's, that's a tremendous amount. I hadn't done that area calculation real quick, but going from eight to 24, I mean, 16 to 24, per square cubic.
Look at it this way, you're saving money down the line when you're going to need it.
Yeah, I was just wondering how far down the line that would take you? If we thought the 13, if we thought the 16-inch was going to sustain us out into the future?
I didn't say that. I don't, somebody else said that.
Somebody else said that.
It's not going to sustain you into the future.
Well, somebody did that because they were designing for a 16-inch.
It would handle what's there now.
Actually, I think the original concept was 18-inch, and then they thought, oh, we can do a 16-inch, but that did get into the conversation, handling what would produce it right this particular moment, not looking at the future.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? I'm just saying I don't want to over-design it either for something that we won't reach in 200 years.
That's not over-designing.
Y'all remember last year when it was, you know, we went through the issue with the drought?
Oh, yeah.
Talked about this, and that was pretty much the current setup we are now, to get water back to town, hospital, you know, in north. And that was the 16 and, I'm missing Steskal, give me the name of the engineer. They had done the water study for us. Jacobs, if y'all remember that, so...
And they, they said we needed a 16-inch?
That was at the time last year when they did the review on, on that area. So, with Dan O'Donnell, y'all remember our geologist? He also talked about the new well, which Jason's talking about now. So, they also did, when they did the test wells and stuff for 11, which is already out there, they found another aquifer. So, this could be four wells on this amount of land that we already have property for the future, which would get us the 5 million and would be able to carry, you know, the water in the 24. So, we wouldn't have to come back probably for 15 years.
The future is now, that's the problem.
We understand that, but if the 16-inch was the future, now you're going from, you know...
16-inch is today.
The 16-inch was to carry what we got now to town, not adding the well, not adding, sure adding two wells.
16 is what would carry what they're doing today.
And is it feasible that...
You get to do this all over again.
Yeah, I understand that. You got a multiple of 2.25 going from a 16-inch to a 24-inch. So, is that even feasible that we would use that much water? I know, I hear you saying the well has the capacity to produce that much. But that's one well, are we going to use that much water?
We need that now.
You're using that much water today?
You need what the 24-inch is now.
We need the 16 now.
No, I'm saying the 24-inch is...
We need the 24.
2.25 times the volume of what that...
This past month, we were at 85% capacity already with the little bit of drought we had. So, what, what we ran into last year was the same thing. We were at nine, over nine last year, and we couldn't get water to town. So, the 16 was proposed to get water to town, what we have. So, we're almost at our capacity if we have any kind of drought right now, and we can't get it.
That, that we understand, or I understand, so...
If we add the well, that, what number was that? That's the 12, and a treatment plant to be able to handle the treatment, then the 16 wouldn't even be able to handle that. It would be maxed out with the third well.
We can put 2,800 gallons a minute through 16-inch pipe, 2.6 miles, without creating one heck of a head loss. You're putting bigger high-service pumps in to move the water.
My question is, is the 2,800 gallons a minute going to be used?
Yes.
Today?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, 16-inch is not adequate for today?
So, you're saying it's going to be used today and it's going to make and consume even more in the future?
Well, you'll be able to add a fourth well by what the geologist sees...
Right.
And increase it to 5 million, just from that one area.
The first recommendation we got for a 16-inch had no capacity for future growth.
Question.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Can you draw on by leaps and bounds when I was done, about two years ago or whatever?
Well, we were drawing by leaps and bounds two years ago, too. So, I'm surprised they didn't design something with capacity, available capacity, like a lot of available...
That would be an issue you could take up for them, is what we're discussing now.
This is something I was going to bring up.
If you're going to do this work, and you have to do this work, you want to design it and have it set for the future because you are saving money in the long run, because you will, with the rate that this town is growing, you will be using that again in a four or five-year period, guaranteed. And you don't have to install another line and put that out there.
This brings up a point I wanted to make, though. We're getting asked to approve 400,000, and it'll be 4 million when they do the project. And if we had somebody give us a second opinion, if you're going to have brain surgery, you're going to go get a second opinion. When we spend $4 million on a project, we have one engineering company that says, oh, 16 inches is going to be fine. We have other people that say 24 inches is going to be fine. Which one do you believe?
The other person.
Depends on what the discussion was on what fine is. It's fine for that day, yes. Is it fine for 10 years from now?
The other person, Mr. Lawrence.
My point is, we're going to have to discern what we need, too. We're going to have to weed through, you know, what people are telling us and make the right decisions. We don't want to be sold something we don't need.
We had a report.
The engineer didn't say the size, we did.
I know.
Yeah, thank you.
So...
But that was an added 2.2.
No, nobody's questioning whether we want capacity. There's no question of planning for the future. Nobody's questioning, should we plan for the future? The question is, is that number right? You know, because we don't want to plan for 200 years in the future necessarily.
What would be the next, what would be the largest, the next largest project in the year?
I've been involved with building pre-water treatment plants, and it goes by gallons per day. And 6 million gallons a day is a 24. That's just kind of dry.
So, if we go up to 6 million gallons with the 24, okay.
You go with 16 and do what you're doing today.
How much fresh water are we using?
You might save a million dollars between the 16 and 24, maybe.
How many gallons are we using today?
How much, how much fresh water are we using right now in this city?
Average today?
We're, we're right, just under 7 million.
7 million a day?
And what we were last month with the, you know, the small drought we had, we were back up to 8.5. We were pumping 8.5 million. And as y'all know, you know, it was 9.2 last year.
So, the 24-inch line is just one component. I know that's just one well. What would that give us total capacity?
That would add five more ma, five more million.
Total? So, what is the total capacity of that?
That would put us...
20 million, 15, 13.
13. And, you know, depending on the wells, it could be as much as 1,200 gallons a minute instead of 1,000.
Okay.
So, that could...
So, we would go to $12 million, uh, 12 million, 12 million gallon capacity, and we're using 8 million, 8.5 million gallons a day right now.
We're using, last, last month, we were 8.5. Right now, we're using just under 7.
But I'm going to use your big number, 8. But this is going to give us a total capacity of 13. That's all I'm saying, so, so the 16-inch was only going to give us a capacity of what, then?
What's there now, 2.5 million gallons a day?
So, right now, we can't pump 10 and 3 and get it to town. We have to basically valve it back.
Okay. So, we got 5 million gallons a day growth built into that?
Yes, sir. Possibly close to 6 million.
The thing is, so, we don't want to have to come back again. Is the 24 big enough? Is what I, I mean, that's what I'm, because where 16 was supposedly at that day, big enough, and we extrapolated, and now we're at 24, we think we're going to extrapolate. Well, how can we make the best decision to where we're not coming back spending money every alternate year, projection-wise? I mean, think about that.
Well, you got other sources of water as well. I'm just trying to figure, how long it take us to go from 3 million gallons a day to 8 million gallons a day? Because that's what we have in reserve when we go to the 24-inch. We're going to have 5 million gallons a day in reserve.
Tim, do you remember where we used another 3 million gallons?
The last one we put in was 11, is that right? Maybe 7, 2007, so we probably, 3 million a day? I guess that'd be a Curtis question, I'm sorry. I was at the plant more than, sewer plant more than water.
And the reason I ask that is because...
I can't answer that honestly.
Yeah, the only reason I ask that is because if that's 25 years ago, then at the current rate of growth, and it may change, it may be accelerating, it may be 25 more years, or it may be less. But this may not be the only place we upgrade the, the supply of water either. We may put in another well somewhere else.
Well, we talked about land last time, if you remember, because you got Faribour Avenue, well one area, treatment plant one, there is possible a chance there we could get another well. And then well three, with that, all the property we have there, you get two, you know, two additional. So, we were looking at land. You wouldn't have to spend any money on land, and you know how much land is this, you know? And at well, at treatment plant one, maybe the school board and the church would work with us, you know, another area there. But that's right now, the only two, unless we do something south of town, which could come up, you know, another feet across the river. That's a future thing, too.
Okay. All right. Anything else on the agenda?
One more, 21. That's the rehabilitation of the tennis court lift station. It was damaged during one of the storms, the building. This is to replace the above-ground pumps and go in-ground. With our, with our employees doing the work and the three prices, we got the lowest price with what's on our standard specifications was Jim House and Associates was the low price.
Which one of the lift stations, I'm kind of looking at the mayor, too. I know you've been in discussion. Which one is the one down in the Point Clear area that's, that's the one that we really need to get rehabbed? Was it the one we talked about for the...
On Thompson Hall Road?
Is it the Valley Lift Station that we're talking about spending the American Recovery Act funds on?
There's a couple that are our priority. One's going to be the Grand...
We have one that's under a time constraint.
That's Twin Beach.
With RSA.
Twin Beach.
Twin Beach, yeah.
Is that with the one, is that one listed under the American Recovery Act funds?
No, sir, it's on the Restore.
It's on the Restore.
What about, and is no, no way to prioritize that one?
So, yeah, we could, we could try it, but then you pull it, I mean, yeah.
Pull it out of Restore Act funds? We're playing a balancing act of time here, I guess.
And there was several, there was like 10 lift stations already in Restore, and we've narrowed that scope down to there's four lift stations, I believe, four or five, six lift stations in the Restore Act, 2,000-something manholes, and then so many linear feet of, of line. But, yeah, I mean, we can look at that, but again, I think Restore hopefully is going to start moving a little bit quicker because we need that to happen to be able to tie into Church Street, too.
That's a big priority for us.
Well, we might can look at that with that additional million that we have.
It's just too bad we can't be flexible with Restore Act and say, well, you guys are, we've got to pay for this rehab, but we need to get it done. We're going to use this American Recovery Act money, and we'll stick this other one over there on Restore Act.
But that doesn't happen that easily.
We wish we could do it that way.
That's wishful thinking, isn't it? So, I wasn't thinking wrong, but it's not on here yet. All right. All right. Anything else on that one?
Pretty good with 21.
Okay, all right. I appreciate it. Hunter, everything you got on the agenda tonight? You going to talk about when you get there?
Yes, sir.
We only got about a minute.
Yeah, I'm going to just...
We're not going to start the meeting late today.
The, I'm going to start talking before I get up there. Councilman Boone, thank you for clearing, because there was a newspaper article about our parking committee. And I want to reassure everyone, there is no parking meters in our plan. But I do want to kind of mention, and I'm not sure how to get here, our planning commission did create a committee to look at new development and some of the parking tensions that are coming with new development in CBD. And Councilman Martin and Robertson, I know y'all were on an email. There has been some, even the planning commission acknowledged that any, any other groups or representation would be good to have on that committee. I know our environmental board, bike ped committee, as well as the parking authority was recommended, and I think the planning commission even mentioned if there was a council member that wanted to serve. So, I'm assuming we can just add those to that committee, but I haven't vetted that yet.